Yeah, I was gonna do it anyway.
Yeah, Roy looks here. Oh, we're on or on air, Kevin?
The other one, by the way.
Kevin. We're on air.
Tomorrow?
Where the?
Tomorrow?
Um, afternoon, probably.
Okay. Cause I want to talk to you about that.
Like Beaverton School District does? No.
You drove all the way down there?
Well, we can't.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Welcome and.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. As I have arrived a little late, I'm organizing myself here. We have a full complement of Commissioners. Uh, this is Chair Catherine Harrington. And we have Commissioner Roy Rogers, Commissioner Nufisify, Commissioner Pam Treese, and Commissioner Jerry Willey, all around the table. We have several different letters uh and other lists of uh projects that we might submit to Congress for what is called congress- congressionally-directed spending. And given the volume on this, I suggest that we review these first and then follow up with uh Board and Leadership Communication. So we manage our forty-five minutes time on this. So that may mean that we uh have to call some folks up from Zoom uh in case they're needed. Uh, I'm going to uh take us through the following order. First, the L U T uh letter uh to Metro on High Capacity Transit. Then uh we have a list of of potential projects for Washington County to submit for congressionally-directed spending requests. Then we have five letters from Washington County jurisdictions asking for our support. Then for Clean Water Services, Clean Water Services has one request for itself and then one from a jurisdiction to support. So is everybody on the same page? Okay, so let's start with the L U T uh H C T comments letter. Uh, Stephen or Chris, how? And our packet was updated uh this afternoon with the latest set of letters. So I know I have it on my computer, but.
Thank you. So um first um today, I just wanted to speak your support for a comment letter to Metro on their proposed high-capacity transit priority for inclusion in the twenty twenty three. At first, I also want to thank those of you who sent comments uh and questions for me to work through, and I believe I pulled those in to this letter and um put it up a little bit like you got on Friday night. Okay. Uh, so the high-capacity transit partners, the regional transportation plan, they're important. They really set the stage for future regional funding and further study and for leveraging additional federal grants. So they are an important part of the regional transportation plan. Uh, while some of you individual members, I know Commissioner Treese um had the opportunity to come in at M P A C, Commissioner Defy at both W C C and at uh J P A C and uh Chair Harrington participated early workshop way back in October with Metro Council. So but what this letter does provides an opportunity for the county to have a voice, uh consolidated voice to move forward uh for the record. Um, and so for those who um there's a lot of words of language in this. I just wanted to be clear, just a bit to go over what the letter includes. So the the projects that are referred to as tier-one priorities, those uh the Metro team picked, those are all active projects that are ongoing. TV Highway, eighty-second Avenue, Southwest Corridor, Streetcar, looking at downtown tunnels. So those would, they just immediately became tier-one projects because they're already active.
Before you move off of, I just have a question. So let me know when is the right time.
If they're about tier-one, well, tier-two.
On Southwest Corridor being built.
Yeah.
And at what point do we need to start reminding ourselves that uh Southwest Corridor buildout is necessary? Or I, and I'm, I'm, I don't know what any kind of legal or compliance bare uh parameters there are, but at some point, the state could withhold funding to us as a county or us as a region, uh particularly transportation funding that the state controls if we're not successful in building
Yeah, this quarter. So fortunately, with the um amendment, so fortunately, the Southwest Corridor is getting put back into the financially constrained R T P with uh a last-minute change on the regional project. That's not been adopted yet, but it is, there's a proposal to put it into the financially constrained to keep it in there. But the, the, the point you bring has to do with the transportation planning rule and the requirement that when a city adopts a comprehensive plan, it meets the adequate levels of service and other requirements. As far as I understand, once the plan has been adopted, there isn't a lot of follow-up and and requirements that that say, oh, you didn't do this or did do this. But it does pop up during development review, the next stage down, uh and there's other analysis to say, okay, how is this development being met? Um, but it is a good, it is a good question, and I think it does show how important the, the, the regional transportation plan is because it provides this role where there's some um lookout of what we are expecting to happen to be used for comprehensive planning and those bigger scale things.
Okay, so it's a great question. Helped me come to the conclusion that we don't need to mention it in this letter.
Yeah, we don't need to mention this letter, but it is a really important part, and it also shows how what a long game transportation is because it takes a long time.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So the other part.
Just, just one minute, but that said, it doesn't need to go into this letter, but perhaps it's something that we should be thinking about when providing testimony and in discussions at J P A C and it other, other, in other areas.
Perhaps with the R T P.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. Wow, that's it. Uh, so the, the letter also calls out then uh support for to what are ranked as the the next highest level um in Washington County, the tier-two projects, which mean gee, they, they're, they need more study and there's a lot here to move forward with, and those are two quarters you all know well. One eighty-fifth, it actually goes down one fifty-fifth a little bit on Farmington. And then the Beaverton Hillstone Highway. And these are particularly important as we continue to think about what we do that Beaverton Hillstone Highway shows also an intersection to know sort of know we can count now. Okay, we're gonna need to plan for more buses through here. Same thing for one eighty-fifth. You know, we've been trying to make improvements for some time for new crossings and one eighty-fifth and other improvements there. So this helps align our plans for these two important corridors in Washington County. Um, the other two parts of the asks for the letter are two projects that the um that the Metro proposed as the bottom of the priorities, tier-four. And the letter says, we need to think about those a little sooner. One of them is ninety-nine W corridor, which we've heard a lot from our partners in the ninety-nine W corridor. We know that that is a big, important link to connect where up with Southwest Corridor, when that's built, it's a growing area and uh we hear a lot about the additional commuting in from the adjacent counties as well, but there's some way to intercept that. And the other one is West. So Washington County has a long history with West's order, the West Side. Commissioner Roy, Commissioner Rogers, West Side, what does he stand for? Express Service? Service. It's been so long. Um, and we know that uh when we look back with the rise of this forecast, that hasn't been achieved. And uh there's just recognition that it is that two seventeen corridor is a really important corridor. So what should we do about it? So we can't just put it last. We need to be thinking about what we can do to improve its productivity and and be some create, add some creativity. The last little closer in here is just to point out that if you look at the map of where the tier, tier, these corridors are, it's that there's a lot of holes in Washington County where there's nothing, and it just serves to remind us, the last point is that H C T will not, is, is important. It's not everything. We really need to keep moving forward with all the other transit service improvements to fill all those gaps. And I think one thing I was gonna say, it's a good thing I just remembered is that the, this time around, the definition of high-capacity transit is really quite broad because it includes a variety of sort of better bus type improvements and bus rapper transit. It used to be referred to only sort of exclusive right-of-way, new starts for the big projects like Green Line and Orange Line and all that. And now the definition's been, come broadened quite a bit. So when we talk about one eighty-five, the B H Highway, it doesn't mean it, you know, it's open to a variety of treatments.
Yep.
So that, I think, covers what is in here and um.
Because of time, I'm gonna move it along. Uh, thank you for your summary. Are there any other questions or requests for changes thus far?
I have two quick comments and one question. I missed something. It took very, very quick comments. One, you did a really good job. I'm glad that you released, spelled out on Western needs to be done. It's not been successful because we have not made it successful, and you've made that point. Excellent job. Uh, two on ninety-nine W, I'm not sure what we're gonna do because the business community is very divided on any solution because, you know, businesses are too close, but I guess you can pick that up. My question is, I again, I got in about two A M. on Monday morning, and so I'm trying to do a lot of catch-up, but I thought I thought the Southwest Corridor was still in, and now I'm hearing it's out. I mean, it.
No, it is, it, it's, it's in the regional transportation.
That wasn't the letter that I, I didn't, okay, so no, but that, that is come a long time ago. We should have been building the same by now, so I'm glad you.
Yeah.
Prioritaries that. Okay.
Pending approval of this letter, it, it, do we, um, and I agree. Thank you very much. This is, this is good work. Um, do we, do you share this with W C C C with?
I certainly can. I know a couple of other cities are submitting comment letters, and it would be nice to see the collection of them.
I think you should see them.
Okay. I've always said the hardest things of writing a letter is not writing it, but it's remembering who to see see and who to put in the address.
Yeah, yep.
You certainly represented our voices when the
good.
So you see multiple times, so you certainly think that.
Okay, C C W C C. What about anybody else?
Well, I'd, I would like to share it with M P A C, Washington County.
You can do that.
Yeah, I can share it without having them C C.
She'll do it.
Okay.
Don't do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so C C the board.
Yep.
C C the Metro Council.
Yeah.
And C C W C C.
Okay.
Okay, C C.
Yep, okay.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Okay, so we're now, we're gonna move on to the uh the memo from Erin Doyle uh to us titled Congressionally Directed Spending Potential Requests for Twenty Twenty-three. Do we have her on Zoom? Hello, Erin. So for the sake of time, I'm gonna move us along here, but feel free to just interrupt. So in the memo, there are five different projects that uh are enumerated. I assume that we've all had the opportunity to read it. So first, do any of you have any questions on the five?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
My question, Erin, is this, is it um when you start supporting everything of everybody's, does that in your mind, and you can probably tell me no, dilute what we find to be really responsible? And I think that the Washington County projects and Clean Water Projects obviously are important to it. It's not that our neighbors are not, they are. But when you start attaching your name over and over and over to every request, does it dilute our ask?
Um, just to clarify where we're at, are we on the congressionally-directed spending profits of our own or on the five letters?
I thought we were dealing with.
We are on the memo from Erin Doyle to the Board of Commissioners titled Congressionally Directed Spending Potential Requests for Twenty Twenty-three. These are our own.
Our own, and I don't have a question.
Great, okay. So no questions on these five that are enumerated in the memo. Uh, I'll start with my comments. Uh, it seems to me like there are two tiers of of um project requests, those that have benefit countywide and those that are area-specific. Uh, so for example, the CAT broadband coordinator and the facilities updates are all countywide if, as I understand them from the description, whereas the Aloha sidewalk infill and TV highway interim safety projects are more geographic specific. Uh, and so I am of this thought only from the standpoint of to whom the requests are being made. And and towards this question of that Commissioner Rogers raised around dilution. Should we go and ask for all five or, or do you want to hear some priority from us? Oh, okay.
If, if I may, Chair, um, one, we were talking with Vance Quick on Monday, and I just want to highlight some new information. Uh, first of all, in our requests, uh, we have four people that we can make requests of, the two senators and the two representatives. On the House side, they are hearing that the um leadership there will not be allowing for earmarks in the Labor H H S bill, which means that the CAT would be an unlikely ask on the House side. So we can also make a separate prioritization related to the senators versus the representatives that um are part of our broadening delegation. So that's uh, I, I think important for you to know, the prioritization right now would be for the senators. I would not recommend doing more than two or three projects, and they do need to be prioritized, one, two, and three, et cetera.
Well, I'll just throw an idea out. Um, I think we should uh put all three of the county one countywide ones out. So that would be the CAT, the broadband coordinator, and the facility updates for county congregate care facilities.
You see, for now, what do you, reason?
As our top three.
Okay.
Not necessarily one, two, and three in that order, but.
Well, that's what I was getting at, too. I, I completely support that. I think that we ought to look at what's countywide significant and focus on it because you don't have a ton of boats, so it's, they've got so many. So we are.
I have a quick question. Um, Erin, good to see you. Um, the dollar amount of each of these projects, how did that come about?
Um, so there, it came about in two ways. There are the caps that the senators indicated that they have on any size of uh ask, which is also reflective of past practice of congressionally-directed spending amounts that get approved through the Ways and Means Process or the Appropriations Process at the federal level. And number two is um in talking with our departments about what the overall need is, most of the, these asks will be indicated to be scalable. Um, we just get less if they give us less. Um, so the five million dollars are usually reflective of the fact that that is the caps that were provided by the um delegation.
Um, follow up on that, Erin. I'm, I'm okay with prioritizing kind, countywide. Uh, in terms of the broadband, um, seems pretty low. Does that mean then we would request a five million? So then we would adjust the dollar amount of the three projects to equal out or?
Um, with the broadband, sorry, I should have clarified with the broadband, that is to pay for a limited duration position so that amount is based on what we expect the salary range and benefits package to include, to have one person to do work. This is a person to do work for four years. So I would not recommend feeling that the five million dollars.
And also the five million dollars is also in line with what the, the project scope is for each of CAT and for the, the congregate facilities.
I'm okay with the three projects you listed, Chair, if we wanted to just push it out for countywide projects.
Other commissioners?
I think this is in alignment with what we heard when we were in D C, so I'm very supportive.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
The next step would then to be to rank them one, two, and three because that is a requirement of the forms I will have to fill out.
Um, how about that is one, facilities is two, and broadband coordinator is three?
When will we know the results of these things?
When they complete their budget.
September. They, they start the budget year in September, but.
Yeah, and in the past years, um, it's a, a matter of when they get their final package and budget together. So for example, this past fiscal year's budget wasn't finalized until January.
All right, you got your list. Thumbs up for me.
I'm good. We can't, those are two, five million and one and two in seven thousand of them.
Yep.
Okey-dokey. That went quicker. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the jurisdiction one. So uh, here are the, the five requests, as I understand it. There's one from T H P R D with regard to their emergency ops and natural hazards mitigation work. There are three from the city of Tigerd, one for Community Service Officer for Homeless Response, one for H VAC for their library, and one for the community room at Universal Plaza. And then rounding it all out, the fifth one is from the city of Hillsborough for the year-round shelter. Are there any other new ones? No? Okay.
Not that I am aware of.
Okay.
I would also consider the Clean Water Services request to the county board as an additional letter for your, wearing your county board hat, but.
Oh.
P D F.
Oh, I had it under C V, C W S board hat. Which should it, which is it proposed to be?
There are two letters that Clean Water Services has put on to, we, we worked together on the one that is asking for the Board of Washington County Commissioners.
Yeah.
For the Clean Water Services app um that, for the project that right now is escaping my name, but I see that Mark is there and he can do that. And then there is a Clean Water Services, wearing your Clean Water Services hat, to support a project that Beaverton has asked, asked for a letter of support from. I believe. Mark, can our.
Is that in alignment with what I summarized earlier?
Yeah. Yeah, a-actually, I think what you summarized earlier is probably even more in alignment than what
with what.
Aaron, who's juggling.
Okay.
Yes, that is right. So what we're asking for is we're asking you with your.
Can we do the ones from the local jurisdictions, asking the Washington County Commission to endorse their projects first without any C W S relation?
It seems like a lot from Tigerd, but I'm okay with it.
I, I go back to my original question, and I liked how you, you framed the first one uh in, in prior county priorities. Is it going to impact us if we go back, whether we send with a lot of requests and we say, and we like these too. Are they gonna start having to pick and choose, Erin?
They're going to have to pick and choose because they're only gonna be able to put a, a certain number forward regardless. Um, what the letters do is they show that it wasn't just an idea that we, we or the partners that we sign on to had, that there's a broader support for the ask, which um, nothing in having multiple letters and project requests out there has traditionally watered down any of those requests. In the years past, we have placed in the letters that we've signed, and we've signed, you know, tens of letters. Um, i- is a, a line at the end that, that while we um prioritize our requests over this one, we are also supportive of that because at the time, I didn't have a list of projects uh to reference. I did not include that in these letters. I'm happy to add that, but it does not dilute um, the, the power of our endorsement or our ask.
Are these jurisdictions also endorsing our projects?
We are working to put together our list of the letters, uh, the folks that we reach out to because there is a requirement for every request to come with three. Um, with the CAT, we're working with all of the partners who would be involved in those services um with broadband and the facilities, we do, according to our city partners um and other organizations like full pack, depending upon the ask um to support our letter. So yes, we would return the request back to some of our partners.
And if they don't, they don't. There've never been ramifications. Um, so if a city decides that they only want their name to be used on their city requests, okay.
So we would endorse their project, but they wouldn't endorse ours.
Yep, yep. We just offer kumbaya and we've got it, we've got it. So. But I have, I have no sense if these are the only ones going in and if other cities or service districts are sending them unbeknownst to us or not. So.
I can tell you that Salmonberry Trail Foundation's going to, uh, they've, they've sent me their draft letter this morning. I've kind of kicked it back to them and said, we need to do some few modifications to it. But I also told them we were making this decision today. It's due on Friday. Um, so I don't know exactly if I would bring that to this group individually and ask them to sign on that, but the, the, to me, the, the the advantage of the Salmonberry Trail is it's significantly distinct from all of these requests. So it does give us a little bit more of a full ask picture, but.
I think, you know, um we get along really well here in Washington County and for the most part across our region and state. And um, it's, we don't have this kind of competitive ranker that other states have where they're competing with regard to a new retailer locating because of a sale. So um, you know, I think they're all good projects. They'll be helpful. Um, so I'm not, I'm not real worried about it.
It also buys us goodwill.
Yep.
I mean, that's the other side. And, you know, by, by denying it, it's, I think that that has more impact.
Yeah, I don't want to be in the evaluation process of all of these ask and say, no, we like this one, but we don't like that one.
Right. So I'll call the question, are we supportive of?
Yeah, we're good.
Yep. Thank you very much, Erin. Now we're gonna move over to the C W S-related ones. To simplify it, if I could, uh, first. First, this is one with regard to the Clean Water Services request for funding for the Forest Grove inflow and infiltration rehab project. So. This is written as the Board of Commissioners reaching out in support of the CWS request, even though we're one in the same. Why wouldn't we just as a Clean Water Services Board submit it?
We also want to demonstrate the county's support on it as well. The letter does mention in there that you also serve as our Board of Directors. So having both those there, as Erin said, three letters of support, we do have four now actually from Cornelius Forest Grove and the Washington County Chamber. And also just from the Washington County Commission itself. We've done this previously on other, other, other federal requests where we ask you to sign letters with two different letterheads. But this case, it's just that one. And on the second, do you want me to address that as well?
Are we okay with this one?
Thank you.
Yes, great. Now on the local jurisdiction one, the city of Beaverton has a purple pipe program. Take it away, Mark.
Sure, absolutely. So this is a, a letter that would normally come under Diane's signature as the CEO of the utility. They have approached her. It is certainly consistent with what our adopted federal agenda is related to water resource management reuse. So kind of before she did that, we wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with that as well. Okay, thank you very much.
Just be a pilot for other areas because Tiger talked about this many years ago. I like purple pipes. It makes sense.
Yeah, they do, they do. And certainly we're expanding our reuse program. It's a unique program in Beaverton. It's a capture and treatment of stormwater and then inject it into the aquifer, point it out later. It's funded through Oregon Water Resource Department, Brad.
Thank you very much. Okay, per our calendar, we have approximately 12 minutes to get in all five Board of Commissioners report out and leadership communication. Okay, who wants to go really fast first?
Had a great week in the Bahamas. Nice, so.
Excellent. I'll go next. I'm really fast. Last Tuesday night, I attended the Aloha Inn Community Meet and Greet. It was, there was great information. There was low attendance from the community. I believe it was recorded, but let me reiterate, great info. And I'm really glad I attended. And thank you to all the partners who did. Then I think it was just yesterday. Man, my day wrong. Ms. Angie and I met with Tri-County Cultural Planning Group. Primarily as funded through RAC and the city of Portland. And they are well connected with 12 Valley Creates. And all the folks involved with the Cultural Trust of Washington County or whatever it's named now, because I don't remember. And so that's underway. We had a great town hall. Thank you again to staff for that and the pivot, given the weather. Then Commissioner Willie and I had a meeting with some federal staffers. And Matt Craigie, our Economic Development Manager and others. Were learning more about how Oregon is positioned and information will be coming to all of us. I've also continued to do some more research as to why it seemed like this surprised me so much. And, but it is historic funding nonetheless. So we've got to figure that one out because it, this is. There's not going to be funding like this again, forgetting all of our seniors, low income and other historically disadvantaged groups hooked up. Commissioner Willie and I also have continued to stay plugged in with goings on with forestry. The CFTLAC. And I'm really bothered by the fact that supposedly Governor Brown has been quoted as saying she won't support legislation for any new task forces. Yes, did I say brown? I'm sorry. Governor Kotek, thank you very much for catching my faux pas. And it just doesn't seem productive relative to where forestry conversations have advanced. And I'm not sure where to go with that sentiment yet. And I don't know if Erin's still on the meeting, so we'll see what happens. Anyway, this week I have a meeting with Metro President Peterson, which I look forward to, and I took more time than I expected. Sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Trees.
I'll go next. I had a catch-up meeting with Commissioner Jaiapal. That was, I learned a lot about the Motloma County structure and we had a good conversation. Impact meeting, we considered the M-TAC, M-TAC nominees. There's an impact overview for new, new members. We talked about the growth management work plan and an update on the UGB land exchange. The, the one thing I want to pull out is we did ask questions about the CRAG, the City Readiness Advisory Group. And, or Advisory Committee. And they have a big role in the urban growth report and they will review and make recommendations on the city's applications for UGB. So I just want to call that out so that everybody's thinking about that. The membership is not settled yet, but it, it's, I think we all want to have, make sure we have broad representation on that committee. So I just.
Question, who are the Motloma County reps to impact?
It is Sharon Myron.
Okay, thank you.
And then I had a, a, a meeting with Jill Walters from Portland Youth Builders. They do a lot of work out here in workforce development. She may be contacting you. It's a really, really interesting program, so I encourage you to have that conversation. Same thing about the town hall, great job. I did go down to Salem yesterday and provided testimony to the Senate Finance and Revenue Committee on Gain Share Extension, the 10-year extension, Senate Bill 537. Erin just did a great job in the talking points and I appreciated the opportunity. It's also kind of fun to see people you haven't seen for a while down there.
Can I ask you, what was the reception like? I just.
It was, you, you know, there's kind of garage door downs.
Right.
But, but there was head nodding about some of, about the issues there. The reception, there were also people in the audience that were agreeing, so that's the other, that's the other audience too.
That's good news.
Yeah, so.
They give you three minutes?
No, I had. Jody Weiser testified and she testified for a very long time. So they kind of opened the door and it was. Went for a long time, so I was right on.
Three minutes and I went over my three minutes. And I thought it was funny because we've set the clock and we kind of expect people to monitor and then here I am testifying. And I don't pay any attention to the clocks.
Well, I had timed myself previously and mine was four minutes and 19 seconds. So.
Four minutes?
Four minutes and 19 seconds. So I have several meetings this week with constituents. We have ESG applications that we're going to be reviewing through the PAB. Emergency. I, I'll come back for it, Grant. I think so. I just know what they are and I, it's kind of like Wes, you know, it's the same thing. And then Friday night is the Central Cultural Gala.
But go ahead.
All right, thank you, Jerry. Welcome back, Commissioner Rogers. You missed a lot of snow. I'll be brief and just give you a lot of transportation updates. My update will be focused on tolling because I've had two committees. Both TRAC and RTAC happened last week. I'll start with RTAC, which is the Regional Toll Advisory Committee. This is a committee that's advising the Director of ODOT. We finally, after many, many months, adopted our charter. So that's something that we're celebrating as a committee because it's a milestone. And then we started a, the discussion trying to get to the toll revenue. So that was a really good start yesterday and what they could be spent on and what are the projections on tolling. So more to come on that. We still haven't seen some of the, the, the formula or the calculus on that. We're trying to figure out. There will be a virtual public hearing on April 4th for comments on the environmental assessment. There were a lot of discussions on the environmental assessment. The comment period, because people are asking more time to comment. ODOT is given about 45 days and, and our tech folks felt like we needed more time. There are different times that people asked, some said, hey, ODOT, could you extend the comment period to 60 days or so? Some are asking for 90 days and we haven't had any resolution on that part. So as of now, the comment period is. It's not allowed to go beyond April 7th. So we'll, we'll update the meeting. And then in terms of TRAC, which is the statewide rulemaking committee on tolling. We had our second meeting. We're sort of talking about the rulemaking concepts. We talked about the customer account and what that could look like. I won't, I won't go into details of it and for our, I know we're crunching our time. But the good news is that, that came out of, you know, a lot of people were wondering, how are people going to get the sticker that's required? And ODOT made a decision to provide the transponder or the sticker for the tolling for free. So that was one good news that came out.
Everybody?
To everyone. Yeah. Yeah. It, I think they said it's about dollar, $2, $2 estimated.
What's this thing for?
So everybody in the state gets a free sticker and a free transponder?
So transponder is a sticker. They're calling it transponder.
Okay.
Which is what to go through, you need to, dot transponder, everyone will get for free.
Okay, how many if you have multiple cars?
That decision, we're still in the rulemaking piece. That hasn't been worked out, but for now, ODOT made a decision to issue that for free. So to be decided in terms of families who have multiple cars, but at least. And then more concepts on, you know, obviously we went over user scenarios, you know.
Okay, we're gonna have to move on.
Yeah.
Mr. Willie, go ahead.
I have questions, but we'll talk about that later. Yeah, broadband is definitely at the top of the heap or discussion as well as forestry. So the chair covered those things and we have been kind of working in tandem with those groups. And it's good to have those conversations with other counties, as a matter of fact, and to hear their perspective on that. We also attended, the chair and I attended the Forest Grove and Cornelius State of the City yesterday, and that's always a fun and good event. I get a Council Creek update again, preparing for the next meeting this week. And meet, continue to meet with constituents and learn all kinds of stuff.
Daniel, could you please send the updated State of the City list to the full board, please? Thank you. Cool. Leadership communication.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. I'll provide a brief update on operations during the snow event last week. The winter season has truly put our shelter and outreach providers to the test this, this year. Last week, we saw over 10 inches of snow, the most snow we've seen in a single 24-hour period since 1944. Our outreach providers got their vehicles ready with snow tires and chains and conducted outreach across Washington County to make sure anyone in need of shelter had a way to get there. Huge thank yous to our outreach providers, including Greater Good Northwest, New Narrative, Open Door, Forest Grove Foundation, Project Homeless Connect, Home Plate, Just Compassion and others. Meanwhile, Project Homeless Connect and Just Compassion readied shelters roughly, serving roughly 100 people the first night. As folks continue to arrive looking for a hot meal and weren't pleased to sleep, Open Door offered to staff an additional shelter location at the city of Beaverton in their future shelter site. I just want to commend all partners in quick action and getting an IGN place to make this happen. Staff did, and our partners did incredible work in a very short period of time. This also demonstrates the relationships that we've built with our providers and our local government jurisdictions. The team is exhausted, but will open shelters again this evening through Wednesday. And hopefully, snow will go away for a year, even though my 12-year-old daughter thought Thursday was the best snow day she's ever had.
I'm ready for that, so there you go.
I want to highlight our land use and transportation team as well. They were challenged by a much bigger snow event than was forecasted. The operations and maintenance staff prepare, start preparing at 4:00 AM on Wednesday, the 22nd. And this, and the shift to 24-hour coverage until midnight yesterday. So that is a long snow response. Challenges unique to this storm included navigating snowplows around abandoned vehicles and sheer speed with which the snow and ice accumulated. I know Todd is here and will send his kudos back to the staff team. Significant efforts by our facilities, fleet, parks and our sheriff's office, who were all responding during this winter weather. So just thank you to those employees and working away from their families many times around the clock during this time. I'm also incredibly grateful for the technology that we have in place to allow our workforce to continue to work through snow events like this, as challenging as it may be for those who are working parents and have kids off from school simultaneously. However, it does allow a continuity of government and for us to continue to serve our community. I will mention tonight's weather because I have had a few questions about that. Freezing, the forecast calls for freezing temperatures just after your board, board is scheduled to conclude your regular business meeting. We don't recommend at this time changing the meeting, but we do advise everyone, staff and board, to use caution on sidewalks and when you're traveling home as they, it may be slippery.
And for those of you who are, unlike me, I live in the valley floor, right? And so I don't have any challenge getting home, but I totally support if you would prefer to go home early before our meeting and zoom in. Please do so. Okay, and that includes for staff speakers. We, I really want to make sure we do the safe thing, so.
What time are you? I know that's our, our. Weather, I live up on a mountain, so I'm.
Yeah, about an hour and a half tonight, I would say up to.
Both the snow again?
Oh, you mean as, I'm sorry, I didn't.
An hour and a half, so about eight o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah, but feel free to just stay at home.
Yeah. I, I support that. Don't worry. I wasn't thinking about it, but it, now I am. You don't have to decide now, okay? I don't need to know until 6:30, right? Me and Kevin want to make sure we acknowledge the bright shining faces on Zoom. So, there you go.
Just one more update, real brief. I do want to provide an update on the governor's homeless emergency actions. On February 23rd, our Tri-County MAC representatives attended the first Tri-County meeting. Washington County is represented by Catherine Gillian, Jess Larson and Comey Calivar. Governor Kotek joined this call and by all accounts was pleased with the progress in developing a tri-county structure. The MACG, which is a county-specific structure and the productive progress we've made here specifically at Washington County. Our local county MACG representatives have been identified and the first two meetings have been scheduled for March 3rd and 8th. The first milestone to be completed by this group is the All-In Planning Template that's named by Governor Kotek's office. The planning workbook and the funds requested for our continuum of care to be submitted by March 10th. This county's group was described by Governor Kotek during our meeting with OHCS and ODM. The intent from the governor's office is that this be a group of doers that are focusing on addressing unsheltered homelessness and removing barriers as they are identified.
What's a March 10th meeting?
That's a staff meeting. That's the next evolution in this MACG. Yep, of the region-wide, the staff group, the group of doers, as they're calling it.
I don't think the chair saw you do the hand.
I think MACG is.
Yeah. Include the focus, and I think the reason All-In and the group of doers has been the governor's focus on getting to action quickly. Include a folk, the work will include a specific, include focus on specific identified geographic areas and involve addressing needs. Include a folk, the work will include a specific, include focus on specific identified geographic areas and involve addressing needs on a by-name basis in that area and then moving to the next priority area. Staff will continue to provide updates ongoing to your board. I do want to just commend staff going swiftly into action and getting this work done on top of our other needed SHS and affordable housing work.
So commissioners, for your benefit, last week, Clackamas County had a big crowd at their board meeting as they have moved forward with the project turnkey purchase. And there is a lot of community feedback. Not unlike what we experienced with our Hillsborough Bridge Shelter, but on a very different scale. And so it may be that Clackamas County has to take a go-slow approach with regard to the regional MACG. So the governor controls her messaging and the rest of us have to navigate with our. So. That's all.
I I have questions, yeah.
I'm surprised, but it was a big issue. I thought we went a long time in Clackamas County.
Oh, real tinderbox with regard to any other governments coming in and requiring the county to do something.
That was.
Yeah.
Local control.
Yep. Yep. So.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that concludes my update.
Great. Mr. Carr.
I will be brief. As you know, we have been working to clean up Mr. Burshot's property. The tires on it, he approved an action. He has engaged with staff, so we're working with him, hoping to avoid having to do it forcefully, but we're not all that optimistic. We are still planning to go ahead. And the second thing I want to report is, as you probably have heard, Metro West threatened to challenge the award of the EMS contract. They did file a bid protest last week. It's ten pages long, single spaced with twenty-four pages of attachments. So our staff is reviewing, working with HHS to determine next steps. That's me. Thank you.
Sure, I wasn't here and I I will enjoy participating. The board's decision, I don't know what.
It was three to one.
Three to one. That's a final decision. There is
Yes.
No other hearings, even if they're found to be problematic with the.
So this is a bit appeal. We will review it. Ultimately, Ms. Angie gets to decide on the appropriateness of the appeal and then they can sue, but will not come back to the board.
It won't come back. So the only way it would ever come back to the board, at least in the old days, was if one of the three who voted in favor would ask for reconsideration.
That is in your rules.
Yeah. And so they could do that today, but not after today.
Not after today. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Taniguchi Dennis, Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good afternoon, Clean Water Services Board of Directors. So the first item is an announcement. I'd like to announce that Jerry Linder is planning to retire from Clean Water Services in July after twenty-seven years.
Well deserved. Say it's not so.
Jerry joined.
Says the guy who has retired from his.
Three times I've gone to retirement, so you know.
Way to call out, Jerry. Come on, Jerry.
So Jerry joined Clean Water Services and we were known as then as the Unified Storage Agency in nineteen ninety-six and he is the only general counsel the organization has ever had. So he's the first in our long history.
For the sake of the recording, the audience mentioned, and some say the best.
Right. Jerry will be working with Clean Water Services through June thirtieth, but Jerry won't be too far away from us. In September, he'll begin serving as the executive director of the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies, which is really great. We'll continue to be able to work with Jerry. So please join me in congratulating Jerry. It's very remarkable career. So he'll be around and we're going to find ways to celebrate his outstanding service with the board and with Clean Water Services. So thank you, Jerry, very much.
Yes.
I wanted to update the board on the inclement weather that we had. The team did really good judgment about whether they could travel safely to work and really all the technology advances really was very helpful to Clean Water Services to weather the storm. There are quite a few staff that were unable to travel because of their locations and because of the weather. The teams are really great at shifting their focus to snow removal. So we had our landscape crew and the field operations folks removing snow so folks can get to work at the treatment facilities and at field ops. Here's a great story that Logan Old shared with me about a particular staff member at Rock Creek. And what he says is dedication shows itself in many ways. And as a result of the second largest storm in the region's recorded history, a Rock Creek graveyard operator was unable to report for duty. So Gabriella Mendina ensued coverage by working back-to-back shifts from noon on Thursday until seven AM on Friday morning. When she, when they were unable to return home to Portland, Gabriella slept on a cot in the engineering building at Rock Creek and then returned to duty at noon on Friday. I would like to extend my deepest appreciation for Gabriella's dedication to service and willingness to ensure the continuity of operations at Rock Creek. What a great job, Gabriella.
Thank you.
What a great story. And then my final update is Tracy Rainey provided testimony before even for the joint committee and semiconductors to remind the committee of the importance of infrastructure funding and seeking their partnership for strategic investments. We had a great week.
Related to that, Senate Bill Four did drop. So take a look. I know I've gotten questions about it. So it may not be the only one, but that's the only one I've caught up with so far. And Mr. Roberts, shout out to you. Thank you for sending the board essentially daily update or twice a day. Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Todd.
Boxes and I learned things, really appreciated having the opportunity to learn about not just the weather conditions, but different equipment for different conditions and different places and all the different approaches that you used across the organization for all the different challenges to meet the needs of our community. Job well done. Okay, so.
Chair Harrington.
Yes, sir.
So in answer to Commissioner Rogers' question regarding a motion for reconsideration, I went back and checked the rules. Does not, the rules do not require that the movement be one of the ones who voted in favor of the motion. The rules say that any member of the board can vote for reconsideration of a motion of an of an action taken as long as the the motion is made before the conclusion of the next business meeting.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be a positive. It could be Jerry, for instance, if he was a negative.
I I think anybody can do it. I think.
Well, I couldn't because I wasn't here.
You go to sounds like.
Sounds like the rules allow you to do it.
Yeah.
You might want to be careful of this side conversation. That's all.
Right.
Okay, so we're fifteen minutes behind. So let's pick up. Consider applicants to the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee.
Boy, you ran.
Hello, Comey. You heard the chair say we're fifteen minutes behind.
Right, right.
He's anxious to get out of here.
I've got snow. Well, good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board. We are here requesting your action to for the work of the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee. So we have four members recommending for reappointment. And Ty Schaffman, who is our staff lead in working with the volunteers on the H pack will be walking you through the applicants and the recommendations. So appreciates Ty's work and leadership role with the H pack. One thing I wanted to, I want to note before handing it over to Ty is that we are in the middle of consolidating three advisory bodies on homelessness. So we had a few, we had the continuum of care, five million, then SHS comes in with seventy million. Some of the COC requirements actually had requirements and so it's quite a bit of work. And for that reason, that is building the one homeless service system. For that reason, there's three positions that we are recommending be left, appealed, and Ty will explain that further. But we are in the planning stages of this work, building one system that will be responsive to both SHS and HUD Continuum of Care. That's the name. So over to you, Ty.
All right, I'm Board Chair. And my name is Ty Schaffman. Commissioners, good afternoon. So I'm here to just walk us through the board appointment that we are recommendation recommending for the housing services. So the just to get to it, Rachel Duke, Kemp Shui, Elena Ewing and Albert Roke. We'd like to recommend their reappointments for their terms ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Like Comey was saying, we will, even after these reappointments, have three vacant seats. And we're recommending that specifically for the community member at large, the faith-based community and the hospital and healthcare positions, which were recently vacated. And so those positions themselves will be replaced once we've concluded the process, which is a community-informed process to build the one governance. And this is a process that has already started, it's underway. We expect it could take up to a year and the goals essentially are to align the, like what Comey was saying, align the three advisory bodies, the H pack, the continuum of care and the Housing and Supportive Services Network.
But my concern on that is not all of the current three advise this board. So I don't want this board to lose its role. So just careful.
And we're noting that as the important observation as we're building and convening the body that's called the Transitional Advisory Group, which are members of each of these bodies. So we have H pack, Continuum of Care and the Housing Supportive Services Network. So these members have convened to review, give advice, and then also in addition to that, we've done engagement through surveying of all the members of these bodies. Now, this is important in that, you know, as was observed by the chair, some of the alignment is is absolutely important, but also as Comey had described, the HUD funding as well as the metro funding of the supportive housing services work as well. So. So Board for consideration, staff is recommending to pause the new recruitment for these members for H pack specifically. And our request is to reappoint these members, two of which are seeking third terms and two of which are seeking a second term. So as you all probably know, Rachel Duke, who is with the nonprofit organization, the executive director of the Community Partners for Affordable Housing. She's employed in Washington County and resides in another county. She's been on H pack since twenty sixteen. Elena Ewing as well is well-known in the mayor and city council seat. She it's it's well, she's the city councillor for Forest Grove. And she also resides in District Four of Washington County. Kemp Shui is being reappointed for a second term in the nonprofit housing provider seat. And he was appointed in twenty twenty and he's the executive director of Community Action. And he resides in District One. And then Albert Roke, who seeks his reappointment in a second term from the sheriff's office seat. And so these are our recommendations. We'd like to present those forward. If you have any further questions, I know Jess Larson is here also to ask, answer, help assist with answering some questions about the one governance. But if there are any further questions, we can.
I'm all for these and I'm saying that because I just have another comment. I was reading a different document. Oh, and it was, I think with regard to behavioral health. And it also talked about continuum of care. So I would appreciate it if when we are talking about continuum of care with regard to homelessness, that we start saying homelessness, continuum of care, because the term of art of continuum of care is being used in different domains, as it turns out. So it's, I can't reserve continuum of care now as, oh, right, Comey's talking about homelessness right now. I'm grateful it's not a TLA. Anyway, commissioners, I just had to get both of those things out, so I jumped in.
I'm good too. My information has Elena Ewing as District One and Kemp Shui is four, I think.
That's what.
That's reverse.
Yep.
Okay, okay, just for FYI.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're all good. Yay. Keep up the good work, folks. Keep up the good work. Alrighty, now we're going to turn it over to you, Mr. Carr. You can stay in the same seat. Oh.
My arms are not quite that long.
It's true. For some reason, I thought you were moving chairs.
I could.
No, no.
So we're here to talk about some potential amendments, the commission rules of procedures, which we were just discussing shortly ago. These are, these are proposed amendments, which I brought to you at a roundtable on December first of last year. So we I presented general concepts that those days, that day, today I'm going to go through the exact changes that I'm proposing. And we've scheduled them to be brought forward to the board, I think in about two weeks at a regular meeting. So I'll do this, try to help you catch up on your time. So this is what I just said, the the we last amended these March third, twenty twenty-two. We had discussed them December first, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. So the questions I'm going to ask today, which of these amendments, if any, would you like to adopt? And if you if you want to adopt them, should we put them on the action agenda or on the consent agenda? Either way is fine, but and it's the board's discretion, really depending on whether any board member objects to the consent. So this is, these are the the proposed amendments. I'm going to do them in high level and then show you the existing language as we walk through. So a change to section one is something that I noted. We've had discussions about how we appoint the vice chair. The process has always been that it rotates through the the district commissioners in numerical order, but that wasn't written down anyway. I suggest that we add that to the rules to make it clear so future boards will know that.
Could we also add in there unless a majority of the board?
Well, Chair, that's not necessary. Any rule can be waived by a majority of the board.
Perfect.
So.
I just wanted to make sure it didn't foreclose future boards from deciding in that there's some special case.
Nothing does that.
Okay, terrific.
Section four is the most substantive. This reflects reflects executive sessions. Subsection A is something that that you've discussed, requiring all attendees to appear in person and to not allow for remote access.
Are you taking questions as we go along?
Of course.
I've I've looked at all, I don't have any problems with it other than this one. I'm trying to understand if you had a snow day or you had other problems. Is there a reason? You said it earlier.
No, so you could, you could always, the board could always waive it by majority vote. So if there was a snow day, you would just say we're going to waive, we'll allow remote access today.
So, okay. Yeah. Then why did you put it in?
Because we don't have anything.
We don't have anything that says it and we've gotten some requests for remote access to executive sessions and the tradition has always been that when before we had remote.
I see. Okay.
To to make sense.
It's not also that if the press wanted to attend or the media wanted to attend, they had to attend in person.
Yes, that's been the question. So what we've been doing is if a board member asks to attend remotely, so we set up a remote access, we let the press to attend remotely. When I suggested that, the rule, the the feedback I got from the board in December first was to know what this rule should be, you attend in person.
Yeah. See that, like, my understanding was the prior statement that you just made, not just the last. See that, like, my understanding was the prior statement that you just made, not just the last part.
That, that was my suggestion, but what I heard was this, so I changed it to this and I'm open to, to whichever way.
Cause I thought we agreed on board members, but this was applicable to media request, not the board.
No, no, he captured it the way we discussed and closed on. But if it was a snow day, for example, like, we could all vote that, yes, we could attend remotely. Isn't that true?
But it would be only the exception to the.
Yes, not the rule, not the norm.
Any need to say that that would be a single access, uh some board in the future that says, sure, I'd like to attend remotely. Me and my three hundred friends sitting behind me as a broadcast.
Well, that comes to the next part about keeping confidential information. The, the, you know, we, we always worry about anything that's confidential that has remote access. So once you open it up, you, you have some level of risk and the board's direction was, again, this is the board's decision. Uh a- and I should tell you that there is a bill in the legislature to require remote access to executive sessions by the media. So this could change uh depending on what the legislature does, because obviously the media would prefer to be able to attend. I don't mind about the risk. So I said.
Thumbs up on this page? Well, did you cover all of them?
Well, I have not really talked about the, you turn by privilege and I mentioned about that reality and responsibility and so, alright.
I'm good.
Yeah, right, that's the most substantive change.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just had a misunderstanding um of that bullet point.
Alright, so these are the other ones, uh nine C forces, the typo. Uh so in section sixteen, we specify the process for first readings as there, there has been some sort of. It's been a little awkward at times and I didn't really understand it because it wasn't written down, so I wrote it down. So for future folks, it'll be there. Uh a section eighteen is the requirement that the auditor provide. So this has been sort of an implied requirement. The charter says that the administrator shall have the response, ability to respond to an audit. Uh but there was no process to give the administrator time and we had some challenges at the end of last year with not getting audit reports in a timely manner.
Hey, hang on, I, I still had a question on uh section sixteen.
Yes.
Amendments can still be proposed at the second reading.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Required additional reading.
Yeah, okay. And uh there was one case that I recall sometime in the five years. Where it was a pretty hefty ordinance. And because of that, I asked that there be a staff report at that. One of those.
Yes.
Readings. And that's still allowed. I can't even remember, is the norm that we usually have a staff report on the second reading?
Well, I've encouraged people to do a staff report on both.
Okay.
Uh just.
Yeah.
The, it could orient both the, the public and the condition on what's going on.
Yeah. Great. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't precluded from communicating and having staff presentations. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Right, and then section nineteen would eliminate.
I have one on eighteen, just real quick.
I'm sorry, of course.
I, I don't have a problem with the pre-notification, but the thirty days is, from my experience, professional experience. Is very, very short if it's a very technical issue. So if there was a technical audit regarding uh information that administrative staff would need to hire their own experts to understand. That's, that's almost impossible on thirty days, so.
Well, it, it does say at least, and the problem was we, we had far less than that.
I know, I, I didn't think it should be less, but I thought maybe sixty days would be reasonable. That, that's, that's really a very, very short time on a technical issue.
Yeah, well, we could make it sixty days.
I think it's fair to have notifications so that the staff respond with their own experts.
I'm okay with that. Do you know what Metro has?
I do not.
Because we've had some pretty laborious audits over there as well. I've only had experience with two independently elected auditors here and then at Metro. And I honestly, I can't remember if it's also thirty days there or some other time period. Whichever one's longer. I. Yeah.
Gives them time to notify.
So what I can do is um put sixty in there and I can uh research what Metro and Longoma do.
Yeah.
That in the staff memo.
That'd be great. Yeah, great.
So if you find out there are thirty days you referred, or we're gonna go with sixty for Washington.
I'll put sixty in and then you could amend it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't bring us further info. Yep.
And then nineteen, uh there, there was a requirement that people pay a fee for a copy of the rules, uh and so. Yeah, so it's, we, we, I would eliminate the paper copy, buying a fee and then just have it on the website. And so uh these are, I'm just gonna walk really quickly through the exact language. Do you see it? This is the language on the appointment of the vice chair. This is the, the new section on executive sessions, pretty much quotes.
And keep going.
Uh this is the, there was an extra the on the bottom line of uh section nine C four. Picking that out.
This one right here, this is a diff, we don't have the same rule that the city of Hillsborough does. Where if you're gonna vote no on. An ordinance, you have to vote no at the first read as well as the second read and action. So we're still. We still have full flexibility.
Yeah, and yeah, I would not recommend that she wanna make you vote based on what you hear.
Change your mind, right?
Yeah, and you, the public hearing should inform that.
Yep, exactly, yep.
And then this is us, the, the language with the auditor. I won't make that sixty days. Most the phrase at least isn't in there, so I'll add the phrase at least. And this is the one eliminating the hard copies. Okay. And then so they're, they're all there, uh and then do you have direction on whether it should be an action item or consent agenda?
I'm fine with consent.
Yeah, you're very busy and I worry about that, but.
Yeah, we can also make the decision day of, right? If there's a whole bunch of public comment. Signed up, we can always pull it off and put it on action.
Alright. That's my presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
You're ahead of schedule now.
And because he's prepared, John Wheeler is already here. So you've got all of the emergency management figured out. I have some nanopods you're going to insert in my brain, so I don't have to worry about anything ever again, right?
That's great. Can I have the controller?
A little bit because emergency management just, it's a heavy topic.
Yeah, we're, we're a dark bunch. Seldom have good news when I send out my emails, but uh every day.
It's informative news, thank you.
You're welcome.
Personally, I think you're over two, John, but other than that, it's okay, you know.
Better than the forecast.
Yeah, that'd be great if I were better than forecasters.
Commissioner Will is always striking people out.
I just said over two is all.
Great, well, thank you. So uh Chair Harrington and, and members of the board, thanks a lot for, for this time to talk to you today. Uh my name, for the record, my name is John Wheeler. I'm the manager of Washington County Emergency Management. Uh I appreciate the board's attention to this issue of emergency management, earthquake preparedness, disaster preparedness and resilience. Um and, and look forward to starting a conversation today. Or. Getting into the purpose of, of our presentation or discussion today. Is of course, I want to follow up on the November second, twenty twenty two roundtable, your earthquake response, uh board discussion and training. Uh I really.
By the way, we passed a resolution and order that says it's not gonna happen in any of our life. My popular vote.
Board has a lot of authority. There are limitations. At least, at least for today. So um. So again, this is uh our, our discussion here today is meant to follow up on that November second and be to be responsive to that November second discussion. Some of the takeaways that me and my team had from that discussion, just to review those and remind you of, of, of that. Was that it was clear that the board had, had some gaps in understanding awareness of the hazards are. Uh that we confronted with our emergency management plans, programs and systems.
Chair Harrington.
Oh, no.
Acknowledge, this is, this is an area that we can all improve.
Yes.
Uh that you're, you're most concerned about earthquakes, certainly, but also concerned about other types of hazards, uh terrorism. Uh workplace violence, extreme weather and so on. Uh you're also concerned about your personal and workplace, or just your individual. Uh preparedness against your Harrington stunt, just leading the way there with kits and supplies and binders and that kind of thing. And uh. And that you need, but also there's uh an interest in, in your clarification of your roles uh and responsibilities and authorities of the board. Uh I think that's something that we have done. Scott Porter, my, my predecessors had conversations with the board about that before, but it's certainly important. Uh with this board to make sure that you have a, a good, consistent understanding uh around roles, responsibilities and authorities of the board. Uh and then you, there was also an interest in, in building awareness of the preparedness of the county and how incidents will be managed. Uh who's in charge, how well-trained uh are, is, or, or is the county uh and your, your staff. So uh we want to be responsive to that. Uh and then the other thing that came out of the uh November second uh roundtable was an interest in having an action plan uh for the board. A specific work plan that we can work through, starting with today's engagement. And then uh. Starting with today, today's purpose is we want to provide an orientation to the county emergency management office. And our broader system of emergency management uh in, in Washington County and amongst our county, regional and statewide partners. Uh here to do some level setting uh around, uh around how emergency management, how the process and system of emergency management works. And then lastly, today we'll, we'll provide a brief overview of our natural hazard mitigation plan. Uh specifically wanted us to uh just very briefly talk about that, just because that is a critical project that is coming to conclusion. Uh for the county, that is a critical plan uh for the county and our partners, and so I wanted to discuss that uh briefly. And so that is our purpose for today. Uh this is then, if we turn that purpose into an agenda, it looks a little like this. What we'll talk about and walk through the board's preparedness action plan. I'll spend a fair amount of time in, uh in our limited time today, giving an overview of emergency management in Washington County. And the, and the countywide emergency management system, talking about authorities of, for emergency management, our program. Our system of planning and preparedness using planning, training and exercises. Uh the countywide emergency management system. And then also look at the regional and statewide uh uh emergency management system. And then as mentioned, I'll conclude by, by uh just giving you a few, few brief comments about the county uh natural hazard mitigation plan. So let's uh start off talking about uh the uh. The board preparedness action plan. So wanted to present this to you today, see if it raised, if this hits the mark, see if you have any feedback or comments on this. Um we basically have a five-part plan that involves four engagements with the board. Uh step one, the objective is to give the board, ensure the board has access to information and resources needed in an emergency. So uh I've already had conversations with Aaron and Kevin and others about making sure that we. Uh have a consistent set of resources, information, contact information, communications tools and solutions. That will ensure the, that uh when does that, when an emergency or disaster strikes, you have the resources that you need. Uh we'll also look at your uh to ensure that we have consistency in that overall planning, that, that preparedness initiative. As we're looking at an onboarding and orientation process for uh for board members to make sure that we maintain that capability. Number two, the, the second uh uh item is, starts with today's engagement, which is again, the objective is to orient members to county emergency management. And the countywide emergency management system. Again, we'll talk about that, that here today, the role of emergency management uh and, and the, the work that we do. And then.
On that one, um I want to carry forward a message that we talked about at our. November roundtable and previous, and that is, we are very mindful of the fact that. Voters particularly hold us accountable and look to us for communications. And so when I see of four bullets under February twenty eighth. Oh, that's today.
That's the, yeah, that's our.
It's not next week, Catherine, oh, gosh, I don't want it to be March yet. Communication is one of our roles and that doesn't quite come through. That's all.
No, that's a good comment and that's certainly something that might be appropriate and maybe a good segue into the third item, which talking about. Uh or- orienting members to their roles, responsibilities and authorities. So this is where we want to spend a work session, probably with Tom's support as well. Uh to give an uh an orientation to board emergency operations. So we'll look at the elected officials uh emergency operations guide, which you've had a presentation on before, I think back in twenty eighteen or nineteen. Uh but it's been updated.
So I'm gonna go out on a limb here.
Sure.
It isn't a matter of somebody telling us what our role is. We have a role. And how do we make sure that role is accommodated in the whole emergency domain? Of acronyms and procedures and process. That's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
That's, that's a good way to characterize that. So we'll, we'll talk in that third engagement again, we'll talk about uh the board's emergency operations and we'll keep that consideration in mind. And then the fourth, uh the, the third engagement, fourth item on the agenda, there is to orient members to messages and programs that build the community preparedness. And resilience. The planning, training, exercising work that our emergency management and our network does is very important, but it's really only half the equation. The other half of our equation is a prepared public. Uh and so an important uh. Uh aspect of community preparedness and resilience is we need to make sure that our communities are, are taking initiative and understanding there's gonna be limits to what government can do. And we need to encourage and, and foster their, their planning and preparedness on their own as well.
And I want to thank the Washington County Subcommittee. That has brought forward information each year, particularly around earthquake preparedness. Part of the reason why I have supplies lists and canned water and now. Re-stried food is because of that effort, so thank you.
Yeah, great, yeah, that's a great partnership.
Yeah, for our employees, that's just been wonderful.
Yeah, and we, we hope to keep going with that.
Can I pick on something very minute and just maybe off of your presentation?
Sure.
This goes back about, about thirty years ago, I probably should have helped and it would be easier for me. About thirty years ago, the board, particularly the chair, had a identification card like we often carry. It had a red background and it was issued by the sheriff and that red told them, in case of any emergencies, if somebody had to get here. I was using the chair, uh that they would be let through these various stations where they stop people. I mean, if you're coming into, there's some kind of emergency, we were not thinking so much for earthquake, we did a little bit, but more mainly. I mean, you could have riots, you could have all kinds of stuff and you needed somebody to be present to assume a leadership role. And, and that all got dropped and, and I, I know that's maybe a little picky thing, but you, you assume that we have these responsibilities, which we do, it was pointed out. But how would you ever assume that we would be able to get to the places to exercise any sort of authority? If we can't get there, I mean, if you can't get through these roadblocks, it would prevent us from getting into command centers. So i- i- have you ever thought about that again, or may, maybe that was just a, a thirty-year-old idea we had way back when that. It seemed to make us happy in those days, but.
Sure, yeah, um there are. There is no uh credential that's available in Washington County, at least that I'm familiar with, that's sort of official, uh the sheriff's office. And, and certain uh departments in the county may have. And and certain departments in the county may have identification for their authorities that that could serve that role, just for the sheriff's office.
But we used to, it was a red background or picture on on their background.
But there's not currently a credentialing system. Ideally, there should be a statewide credentialing system that gives consistency. So whether you are presenting that badge to the sheriff's office or to Oregon State Police or to another entity that's that's at a roadblock. Ideally, you would have that. And there has been, there there have been some examples of where that's done, for instance, for entities that do repairs of of radio communications equipment. There is a, there is a that example there that could be followed in the future, but right now there's not a state, at least a statewide.
Commissioner Rogers, we can take that back and work with Sheriff Garrett and see what options could pertain at least to Washington County.
Yeah, you'd be another one that you should be here. I mean, if there was some kind of a chair and you and maybe whatever board who I need to be here.
We can explore that.
Yeah.
I just remember the days of joining interim C O Steve Rhodes here in the office during COVID every day. Okay, where are we at today? Yep.
Okay, great. And then the last engagement I'll mention is that we would like to involve the board in some sort of training or exercise activity. We've left this left this mostly undefined at this point, but I think it would be good to validate the discussions that we've had, the learnings that we've had, information that we've shared with you and some sort of training or exercise activity. As as the fifth item, so. So that's our concept. I wanted to present that to you, see if there are any other good good conversations so far, but don't know if there's other conversations or ideas we want to.
I'm just grateful that we don't have hurricanes and tornadoes as a general rule. So the statewide, the general rule, the statewide closure that we had in the nineties with the typhoon was certainly an experience.
I didn't even touch it. Your phone listening.
Rights, like, yeah.
The district for a commissioner.
A question.
Sure, yeah.
Great, great information so far. The work session orientation to the board, emergency operation, that the projected in spring. I'm wondering the the bags that the chair had that was assembled some different, are we going to get a bag like that and for our offices or?
That'll be, that would be part of our our first item there, which is looking at resources for the board. That's that's certainly something we can look into as an option is is identifying what resources that we want to consistently provide.
The red bag? Is that what you were thinking about?
The red, yeah, I mean, I've, we've got a
Given to each board member by Clean Water Services.
Right.
And I thought that was when you were already on the board.
I I have that back, but it didn't have supplies in it.
That's how I spent my money. My supplies.
That's why I was asking the question to John, to see this is about something that Washington County is going to provide.
I guess we currently, we currently don't have that survey. I think Commissioner Fai, you're raising a good question, you know, what is what is the preparedness that we're helping positions the board members and probably some other key staff? So we can further have that discussion and how it fits into available resources at the next work session.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, great. Are there other, any other comments or questions about her, our board action plan?
No, this is good plan.
Great, excellent. Well, in that case, if if we're we're good with that plan, I'll go ahead and proceed with our discussion today, which again is to just to do some level setting around how we, how emergency management works in Washington County and with our partners. So getting into to that element of talking about our roles. First, wanted to talk about the authorities in Oregon State law that that prescribes an emergency management program on what's required for local jurisdictions for emergency management. The the rule is pretty simple, R S four one three oh five is really pretty simple, which is it simply says that each county of the state shall establish an emergency management agency. Cities may, city years are are not obligated to. Though we, most of our cities in the county do have some level of an emergency management program. And then the baseline essentials of an emergency management program is that we have to have an emergency operations plan or an E O P. I'll talk a little bit about how our plans are laid out in Washington County a little later. We have to have an emergency operating facility. We translate that to mean that we need to have an emergency operations center or a central coordination facility that we have in order to manage the county's unified response to an emergency. We
Typically where we operated out of in the law enforcement center?
Yes, yeah, that's exactly. Training rooms, A, B, and C, law enforcement center.
Thank you.
We have to establish an incident command structure. We have to have a concept of operations and an organization for how we're gonna have a structured response. And then we need to coordinate our efforts with the Oregon Department of Emergency Management as well. That's pretty, that's that's pretty much all the requirements that there are on us. There are certain grant requirements and other standards, principles that we go by. But those are essentially our authorities that that bring us here.
Can I ask a question, John? Back on that where it says that emergency operating facilities, you said where we would go. I didn't think the jail had been seismically updated, has it?
It was decided, as we were told recently, given the amount of concrete and steel by which it was constructed for a jail, it was deemed to not need any further seismic retrofit. Which is not to say, I don't know that it's actually been studied to see for sure how it would do rather just base assessment.
And we can follow up on that, too.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, but I thought this building in its last remodeling was upgraded, not to the top scale, but so I was just saying, we we should probably have a plan A and a plan B in that, just in case one of them isn't there or isn't usable. And I would like to think this building might survive better than that building, but I I don't know.
We'll follow up on that question at the next work session.
Yeah.
The the law enforcement center did go through a pretty substantial seismic retrofit and it does, it is built to a fairly high immediate occupancy standard. So that's a great thing and a great location for our emergency operations center and those training rooms.
That'd be the preferred place. I definitely agree. It's just
Yeah.
Didn't know.
Could you also speak to with regard to authorities? Is there any responsibility is the word that I'm using right now with regard to either our our enabled or voluntary or mandated participation in our D P O?
So the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization, I will talk about
Okay.
Briefly, but
Great.
Well, maybe we put a pin on that while attack that.
It's perfect.
Yeah, that's part of our, you know, our regional emergency management system. So a little bit about us, about our county emergency management program, we are eight point five full-time employees. We are fifty-five percent general funded, forty-five percent comes from rent and other funds as well. We have a, I'm proud of our team. It's an excellent team. It's been actually a fairly solid team that's done a lot of really excellent work over over a pretty challenging few years in the world of of emergency management. Our team does, Washington County L U T does fund a full-time emergency manager. Kenji Legel, he's actually embedded in our program, so he's part of our team. But his his focus, one of his focus, central focuses areas is supporting land use and transportation's planning and preparedness. Such as their department operations center and and so on. The county is also the host to the Washington County Emergency Management Cooperative or the E M C, as it's called. The E M C used to be called the Office Consolidated Emergency Management, when it was first formed back in nineteen ninety-five. It was originally actually hosted by Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue. And it's our forum for countywide planning and preparedness for its its member organizations that contribute to that, to it every year. And it's it's grown to to where it is now, to where most of the cities, Clean Water Services, Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue are all members and supportive members of of that organization. It has an executive committee, Aaron's going to be joining that committee and under Sheriff Cook, currently Sheriff serves as the as the chair of the Emergency Management Cooperative as well. So that's a little bit about us. I like to also talk, you know, I talked about the 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 rules that authorize an emergency management program. I think it's also important to understand the standards and principles that we operate by in emergency management. One of the main ones that specifically drives our preparedness and response operations is what's called the National Incident Management System or N I M S. This is basically the national standard for how nationwide across all sectors, all disciplines, how we are going to respond interoperably when we have a disaster. It gets the question of how do diverse organizations with diverse terminology and concepts of operation and organizational structures and decision-making processes. When a disaster happens and we all of a sudden need to work together, what's our format for doing that? And that's what the National Incident Management System is, is that common framework. Some of the concepts you've probably heard like the incident command system or I C S is one of the the standards or another one we've been hearing about more recently is is the multi-agency coordination group. As a concept for for multi-agency collaboration and coordination, for instance, those are, those are N I M S concepts. They're out there. We also, we take an all hazards approach to our planning and preparedness. And what that means is that it recognizes the most effective and efficient way to plan and prepare for emergencies is to really look at those functions that are common to all emergencies. So as as opposed to saying, you know, if we have a landslide, here's our plan for a landslide. Or here, if there's an earthquake, here's how we respond to an earthquake, we look at understanding, for example, that sheltering is a common thing that we'll need for for multiple types of hazards that we have or evacuation or alert and warning or communications. And so it takes a functional approach to where we look at, how do we effectively organize our efforts around those functional areas? And that really is is the most effective, most efficient way to ensure that we're we're prepared for an incident is to do it for that all hazards approach. Even though when we get into it, we do have to do some sort of specific planning for certain types of hazards like extreme heat is 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 a type of hazard that we've been working on recently. We also have an exercise-based program. Emergency management is unique in that when we establish a process. Unless we do an exercise, the only chance we'll get to practice that is if there's a real disaster and that's not the best way to go. You want to have some sort of process in place. To where you're going to walk through the process and and test your ability to perform that capability. And so that's an important part of our program too, is is it's an exercise-based program where we go through a cycle of developing plans, capabilities, tested in an exercise. Evaluate, learn our lessons and then start that cycle again and go back and continuously improve our planning, our training, our exercises and so on. We also take a, we also have a whole community focus. That's a common term in other areas, but it Craig Fugate, the FEMA administrator from several years ago, really emphasized FEMA and the emergency management's focus on the whole community. To really recognize that we need to empower not just local governments and first responders, but we need to look at also empowering community-based organizations, neighborhoods, volunteers. Special districts and and other types of organizations and really empower them to respond effectively in and in a coordinated fashion to emergencies. The, so in terms of, I also wanted to talk briefly about the hazards that we plan for. Like I said, we do all hazards to the greatest extent possible, we do all hazards, emergency planning. But that is in recognizing that we have a common set of hazards that we are most concerned with and that we do our our planning and preparedness for. The main or the main hazard, of course, that we are, that presents our worst, not necessarily our most likely case scenario on a given day, but our worst case scenario is the cat is the earthquake, particularly catastrophic case, eighty subduction zone earthquake. Which you talked about extensively in your in your November second round table. That really is where we spend a lot of time in our planning and preparedness is really focusing on that with the understanding that if we're ready for earthquakes, that we'll be ready for a wide variety of of hazards, may strangle us. Floods and landslides are, of course, our most common hazards in in Washington County, severe weather, as we know from recent experience. Disease outbreaks, hazardous materials, wildfires and terrorism are all hazards that that we we pay specific attention to. Of course, in the last few years, we've we've come to get experience and and great and and increasing concern with these emerging emerging hazards of extreme heat. Wildfire, smoke, cyber attacks and and domestic violent extremism, as well as another sort of priority hazard. Particularly that at the national level where there's a lot of concern. Oregon actually ranks ranks number six between two thousand eleven and two thousand twenty and the number of domestic violent extremism incidents that we've had in in compared to other states in the nation. So that's another area along with cyber attacks, extreme heat, smoke, that's a growing area of concern and we're we're putting more attention in our planning and preparedness initiatives.
A quick question about landslides. I remember there was an email to us recently about Timbers. So how significant does it need to be to qualify a hazardous? A landslide.
How significant does a, does a landslide be?
Yeah.
Well, generally, the in our planning and preparedness for landslides, it's mostly landslides that are going to be associated with really heavy rains that occur. And usually that's that you, we can be dealing with a large number of landslides. They're they're usually pretty small, so they can be, you know, medium, medium-sized landslides. But so does that answer your question, I guess?
Yeah, it does. I was just reflecting back to that landslide email of Timbers. I don't know if you recall. Recently, there's a landslide on the roadside of the road.
Okay.
And I just, you know, wasn't sure the significance of to Washington County and so.
So, uh, maybe
Not specifically from my
Yeah, so if it's a landslide that is really contained with one area, we would not activate the E O C in emergency management. If a landslide would would typically activate the E O C is if it's significant rainfall, flooding and landslides that are causing blockage to transportation, roads, potentially even impacting property, public or private dwellings, for example, that would be the time to activate the E O C. Part of that is also not only for the support and response, but to also be eligible for FEMA dollars.
Ah, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tony.
A good summary in that.
So just you don't have volcanoes in here, which is, I was around for the nineteen eighty blast, so. But I would think, you know, obviously that's not necessarily going to reach us completely, but so there's a, Multnomah County has a significant event. Would we then trigger our E O C to coordinate with them? Is that what we would do?
If if Multnomah County does have a significant event, we could activate our emergency operations center in order to provide mutual aid. Yeah. You know, generally, the emergency operations center is going to activate sort of in a general, in a general sense, whenever there's, we're overwhelmed or we have a potential to be overwhelmed and we need to have a centralized, coordinated, unified response. If it's more than just what the sheriff's office or L U T or Health and Services can coordinate and we need to tie things together and have a unified response plan. That's when we'll activate the emergency operations to provide that support. Volcanoes are, you know, is definitely a hazard. We do address the volcano hazard in our hazard mitigation plan. Because we're not Because we're not necessarily close to like mountain alleles. We we don't have the explosive landslide. And debris flow impacts, the impact would probably primarily be an ash fall impact. Which which could have could could be very serious as it was back nineteen eighty. I remember that as well. So, yeah. Okay. So those are our hazards. Again, our principles, hazards that we plan for, I think the the next topic to consider is what our how our planning is organized. I know this is one. Area of interest that was hinted at in the November second round table. And so this. This listing of our of the categories or types of emergency plans up here is. Is is consistent framework for how our plans are organized. I should also mention there's a handout that was included in your in your packet that that. We didn't want to have too busy of a slide up there, so we tried to consolidate as much as we could into a this Emergency Management Plans Guide. But the categories of plans is there's our natural hazard mitigation plan. And I just looking at at what our strategies are pre-incident for reducing our risks from from natural hazards primarily. So that is looking at, for example, that can include strategies like elevating flood prone structures, buying out flood prone structures. Seismic reinforcement of earthquake vulnerable structures. And doing other things related to retrofits or. Community planning and and development in order to minimize our risks from that. So that's all. That kind of stuff is captured in our hazard mitigation plan. In terms of our preparedness mission, I mentioned the family emergency plan. That's, we don't do family emergency plans for for everybody, but we encourage. Every family to have a family emergency plan. Like I said. Individual and family preparedness, community preparedness is the other half of our community's resilience and an important part of that is a family emergency plan. And it's critical that every family have some sort of plan in place for meeting locations. Communications. And financial contact information, insurance information should also all be encapsulated into a a family emergency plan. There's also next the facility emergency plan. So that looks at if we have an emergency in the workplace, in the work environment. What are those immediate actions that we take to call nine one one to render medical aid, to respond to a fire, to? How do we respond if we receive a bomb threat or if the ground starts shaking and that kind of thing? That's all encapsulated in what we call our Facility Emergency Plan. For the county risk, risk management is is responsible for that roles. I'll talk about here in a little bit. And that's really looking at, you know, if if our employees are impacted in the workplace, how are they protected to the point to where, you know, they get out to? If they need to evacuate to the point to where they get out to the assembly area and we do the accountability for them. And ensure that that all of our employees are taken care of and protected.
I imagine that's more complicated now that we have folks working remotely, some some at will from one day to the next. Yes, yep.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, different different environment, which is why these these plans require a lot of care and maintenance over time. Next up, we have our continuity of operations plan. So that's. Best way to think of that is that once we have evacuated our employees out to that assembly area and we've accounted and ensured the safety of our employees. Then we have to look at, well, what are the impacts of the disaster on the county's mission essential operations? The things that the county must do, whether that's immediate, short term or long term. What are those what we call essential functions that we need to? If assess to see to the extent to which they were impacted by the disaster and then assess. How we're going to restore those or how we're going to develop workarounds to those to to the loss of those those mission essential functions. So that's all within the category of what we call continuity of operations, planning or COOP plans. The next phase of the process then is if. We our employees are cared for, if we've addressed our mission essential functions, then the next question is, is well, how do we care for our community? In a in a disaster and impacts to to life, safety, public health, environment, property. And that's captured in our EOP or Emergency Operations Plan. And that is the plan that identifies the role of the Emergency Operations Center, our Incident Management Organization. That's where we apply that all hazards concept of emergency planning and preparedness to where we. We develop plans for each function such as communications, alert and warning, evacuation and transportation. Shelter, mask care and so on. And that's all encapsulated within our our Emergency Operations Plan. That's our, whereas the COOP Plan is internally facing, the Emergency Operations Plan is an externally facing plan. That 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 defines how we're going to work together in the county and with our partners to to protect our community. Those are plans developed in advance. Then there's our response plans that are developed post incident. So there's our Incident Action Plan, as we call it. You'll hear about that when we do activate our Emergency Operations Center. Typically, we develop those about every twenty four hours and it's the, it's the plan that we develop every day for the following day. How we're going to organize and and make sure that we have clarity of roles and responsibilities for all of our responders in the county. That's all encapsulated within what we call that Emergency Action Plan or or IAP. And then last but not least, there's our recovery, the the recovery mission and the development of what we call a disaster recovery framework. And so that's looking at, once the disaster is over, once we've implemented our Incident Action Plan and done the work to. Protect life, safety, life, property, the environment and and dealt with the acute critical activities. And the next question is really the hardest part of the equation, which is how do we restore our community or or even build our community back better? Post disaster and that's captured in our disaster recovery plan. So that's basically the 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 framework that we have for how we organize and and establish the scoping and the interrelationship between our different emergency planes. Again, if you if you look at the plans guide, I did put in some some guidance there as far as how are the details around our our local plans? And the status of those plans and who owns them and 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 where they're at. So certainly let me know if there are any any questions or comments around any of that material. So those, that's our 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 planning framework. The the work then that we do in order to implement our plan is covered through. The preparation work that we do, for example, preparing our Emergency Operations Center. Again, that's our central coordination facility for information resource, information support, resource support and decision support as we call it. So. Generally, the the role of the Emergency Operations Center is to maintain situational awareness amongst the county and all of our partners. We will report that information to the to the State Emergency Coordination Center and to other partners. And then we are the single entry point for resource assistance and request from from many of the county departments. Or cities, special districts or mutual aid partners as well. The Emergency Operations Center serves as a central entry point and coordination point for all resources that are managed in a disaster. And then decision support as well as another important part of what we do, which is supporting incident commanders out the field and others. And working through our EOC Policy Committee or Multi-Agency Coordination Group if we need to, in order to make critical decisions that we need to make in response to a disaster. And then, of course, the EOC is there to ensure, is just generally there to ensure a a one Washington County coordinated, unified response there to get us onto a single plan. So the EOC is an important part of our preparedness training, training where we, the the county emergency management also manages a training program for EOC personnel. And will support Incident Command System and other functional training for our partners. And then exercises, we are required as a condition of one of the grants that we participate in to do two exercises per year. And then traditionally each spring, the county will do a countywide exercise with our partners. We did just a small exercise last year and unfortunately because of wildfires and pandemics and that kind of thing, we got some exercise credit. Or some some real life things which we can do.
Good news, bad news.
Yeah, exactly. It's it's. Nothing better than the real thing, except for there's other impacts, the real thing when we get down to it. But but again, exercises are are a critical part of our of our overall program.
Can I? Ask a question here?
Sure.
So. Like it or not. I don't feel as. Up to speed as one of over. Twenty four hundred employees of Washington County on emergency management support for our employees. And as the County Commission Chair, I put on myself a high degree of responsibility for those twenty four hundred employees. And every now and then I transfer that responsibility over to Ms. Angie. So, and who is just head and shoulders above me in this arena. But it's things like. I, we, when we went through our safety briefing last week. We spent a little bit of time talking about where the assembly site is for us and right over there in the parking lot. But I don't know what. I don't know, I don't recall in the five, four years plus that I've been on this board, what. Support we've communicated for our employees so that they know in the event of such a disaster that. Our CAO, our HR officer and our new facilities person Laurel Brown are going to be like, whoop. Some, I know there are a lot of certifiably smart people with roles and responsibility for community wide and all the your emergency management connection. But. You know, we're we're learning a lot or I've been learning a lot lately about the state of affairs, about our buildings and. Where we have employees spread out all over the place. And so I think about, okay, our employees, do we make sure they? They know what to do if if such a thing happens during the course of a work shift or day. And then how do they know that we are supportive? Well, at least the CERT training I've been in, you take care of your family first and. Then before you walk across that threshold, you're you're mindful of, okay. Then what? And then participate in your neighborhood and your community. And here we are as public servants. So at least a lot of our voters have an expectation that as public servants, you're going to report back in and contribute as best you can. So. I, I just don't feel as connected yet with operations for Washington County.
Let's just add that as a bullet point for one of the upcoming work sessions. And I think I'll just like, there's. There's the workforce during the time that we're activating the EOC. And then there's the workforce during just the time of just snow and this last severe weather. And so we can, we can provide a follow up because I think there's an, there's an and in there for both. And this is a space that we're actively talking about because we're in some ways just also pulling our head out of the COVID operation.
And we did pretty darn well, I think, protecting our employees or wanting to make sure we.
So that was an opportunity for us to update many of our internal policies. And now it's time and John and his team are leading on an internal after action process for COVID. And I'm confident from there, we will be able to come out with some learnings of what we need to activate in support of our workforce in the future as well.
And then I just paid attention to the next slide and I guess maybe I should have.
Great segue into the next slide.
Thank you, Josh.
Skip through it quickly here. The, so great discussion. And yeah, that's something that we can, we can look at and and assess going forward as well. So. You know, I I did want to talk about it and and again, very apropos to to the conversation there is what you're talking about is sort of an aspect of our our overall county emergency management system. It's not just us, the eight and a half people that are are in the emergency management program. We are a distributed system and there are other players and important players in our. Our overall Preparedness and Resilience Initiative with the county. As I mentioned, risk management as in their role as leading in coordinating employee health and safety. They manage the facility emergency plan and sure the assembly areas are established. They developed the. The emergency procedures that are those facility emergency plans, look at evacuation, bomb threats and that kind of thing. There's the EPSST and I know you've had some engagement with them recently around that that group that Julie. Julie and Cloud is leading and I have one of my staff members participates in that group that's focused specifically on preparedness for active threats and workplace violence, which is really. Really, I I think an excellent initiative and and I think really speaks to what you're looking for in terms of of identifying the preparedness of of our employees and and our ability to protect our employees. I think that'd be an important area that that we can have of work that's happening. Don't also also don't forget there is the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program or the FET Program. Which is an excellent, excellent program that's that looks at public health emergency preparedness, the. And responding to public health, disease outbreaks and other emergencies, obviously very night, very well tested during the COVID emergency. But another important, important dimension of our county preparedness. There's our continuity of operations planning initiative. Alita Fitz in our office is our overall COOP Program Coordinator and she's been doing a lot of work with a recently formed continuity working group. To to recharge, reevaluate and recharge our continuity of planning efforts. There's some exciting developments here in terms of identifying an interterpinal, internal operations management team, which is going to. Unify the management of significant COOP incidents for the county and and the and the leadership of those incidents. And then they work with the COOP leads that are within each department. We actually have about, you know, as of today, sixty plus continuity of operations plans that are in in the county. They're in varying degrees of currency and and they need to be updated and and that kind of thing. But there's some great work that's that that we can build upon in order to in continue to improve our our business continuity capabilities. And then we have various project work groups that our our program and the FET program and others work with in partnership with other county departments. And just to give you examples of some of the projects that we're working on is there's our. Our natural hazard mitigation plan, again, coming to a conclusion here and I'll talk about that towards the end. We're also finishing up in, you know, with our hazardous materials, emergency response plan. Scott Porter, my my predecessor has been still with us doing some really excellent and important work in terms of. Updating our hazmat plans for the county and developing site specific plans for individual facilities as well. It's it's exemplary work that he's done there. That's that should be done here in just just a couple of weeks or so. So those are coming to a conclusion. We do, we also have a number of new and ongoing initiatives and the interest of time, I'll just mention a few of these are alert and warning initiative. Oregon recently adopted a statewide alert and warning system called OR Alert. Washington County adopted that system about a year and a half or so ago, using the Everbridge Alerting Platform. The county uses that now for both internal, as we had some recent experience with, and and external notifications. And my team is. Doing a lot of work around. developing plans and procedures, also developing messaging templates to support translation of of critical emergency messages for the public to make it available in multiple languages, make it culturally culturally applicable and and that kind of thing. So a lot of great work happening there. That's current, yeah.
I think yesterday I got a call on my phone about the incident of the suspect. Is that the system they're using? I feel like Philip, you were ahead of them, but I still got the call. I think I got your message.
Yeah, that's that's our Everbridge system, which the county uses. And and that was a great example where it was used several times to give the notification of that that suspect. So we're also doing a lot of work on mask care and shelter. The 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 Red Cross is an excellent partner for us. I know they're on the agenda for for this evening, which is great. But they do have, the Red Cross has limitations in terms of the number of volunteers that they have. And specifically when we look at major, a major earthquake where we're looking at having to shelter tens or or multiple tens of thousands of people potentially that will be displaced, the county's doing a lot of work right now in our program and with the emergency management cooperative to build our capabilities around disaster sheltering and mask care. So a lot of important work there. And the last thing, just in the interest of time, I'll mention is is Antonia mentioned this as well, as we're doing a comprehensive COVID after action review and improvement planning process. We've recently hired a contractor that's that's starting now in an initiative to do a comprehensive after action report for our COVID response. We've done some smaller scale after action reports, such as of our E O C operation. This is going to be more of a comprehensive and inclusive after action report that will hopefully really serve to inform and advance for us and for the public health emergency preparedness program, a lot of our ongoing initiatives to improve our our preparedness. So.
You have to have your consult at the board of commissioners.
So noted. So I also want to mention, and and we mentioned the R D P O and and earlier as well, too, is is that's with that last slide, I talked about our county countywide emergency management system. Obviously, there's also a re and a very valuable and important set of partnerships through our regional and state emergency management system. Oregon Emergency Management was actually very, just just a few months ago, transitioned to be a standalone department. It previously was in a division of the Oregon Military Department. It's now a standalone department with its director reporting directly to the governor. And it's about their staffing is about doubled in size. We're excited to see the added capability from them. They manage the state's emergency coordination center and they're the access basically the access point when we have disasters for assistance from state agencies. There's also the position of the state resilience officer. This is a relatively new position in the governor's office that looks at with a primary focus on earthquake resilience. And this has been a a pretty important position to do a lot of assessments and a lot of preparedness and resilience work around earthquake resilience. And then the regional disaster preparedness organization is sort of the regional version of the emergency management cooperative. It's our, it's our forum for the five county Portland metro area, Clackamas, Washington, Monona, Clark County in Washington and Columbia County are all members and participants in that R D P O organization. And that organization has really done some outstanding work in the past several years regarding emergency transportation routes, emergency communications, alert and warning and other functions. Mr. Teresa is your representative to the policy group of that organization. And I appreciate your participation there.
And I will just note that the general fund does support our membership to the R D P O.
It's an intergovernmental agreement organizations. We participate in that. The emergency management cooperative I've I've talked about already is our forum for countywide planning and preparedness. As hanging off that group, we also have what we call our local emergency managers group. I pull together a meeting every other month of all the emergency managers across the county, private sector, public sector, special district, school districts, hospitals, all participate in our local emergency managers group. And then most recently, we established our, what we call our local emergency planning committee or L E P C. And this is a federally mandated and state mandated form for hazardous materials planning and preparedness. We recently.
Will participate in that one?
I'm sorry?
Does Wilsonville participate in that one?
I don't think we have Wills- Wilsonville explicitly, the city of Wilsonville.
Wilsonville is split between our two counties.
Yeah.
We do have some small population residents in Wilsonville and Washington County, but there's more in there's industrial area there, which is why I was wondering about that.
We're going to be building the membership of that organization. Right now it has a lot of our industrial, our chemical facility contacts are participating in that group. And we have really great participation in there, which was one of our objectives was to pull that group together to break down some of the barriers to to getting those folks prepared in in conjunction with us. So and then I'll I'll mention city emergency management programs as well. Again, every city and the county has some level of an emergency management function. Hillsborough, Beaverton, Tiger, and sure would have have full time emergency management programs as well. And then that's, that's pretty much my presentation. Again, trying to present to you some concepts of operation and help explain our program, how our plans work, how our preparedness system works, how we have a unified system across the county to support our our preparedness and resilience. So wanted to to present that to you. And then you know, also, last item when I wanted to mention is a separate agenda item here was our county natural hazard mitigation plan. Ken Schlegel, the Land Use and Transportation Emergency Manager, has been really working on this project for years in terms of seeking grant funding for it, pulling together partners. In the two thousand seventeen version of this of this project, we had it was the county Tiger and Hillsborough that participated in this initiative. This year, we were excited to have ten other jurisdictions, including Clean Water Services, participate in the development of of a very robust hazard mitigation plan. So it's been a pretty successful effort so far.
Darren, I'm only on page thirty five of one hundred and fifty five.
Oh, no. Okay. Well, we've got time. We we.
A large document.
Yeah, actually, if you add all the annexes from our our jurisdictional partners, I believe it's about a thirteen hundred page document, but we won't put that reading assignment. So we added the, we hit all those hazards that I listed before, we had, we do hit the volcano hazard into an assessment of volcano hazards. And this year we added extreme heat, wildfire, smoke and and dam failure hazards to our our assessment. The hazard mitigation plan includes a risk assessment and and most importantly, it identifies identifies a listing or of mitigation actions that 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 we'll have on the plate so that when we do get resources, grant funding and other other resources to help implement those, we can put them into action there.
Do levees fall under dam failures? What? The reason I ask is because former mayors of Forest Grove have tattooed on my head. And I recall back in the ninety six floods and then another one somewhere in the two thousands where Gales Creek was really impacted by snow melt and rainfall. And there was a or is a levy, I think, still with a nursery property. And they were really quite worried about that levy failing and causing further problems. I just want to make sure that's on somebody's radar. And I don't know how many levees we have in Washington County. Really? Oh, dear.
So that would go on the county's plan, you know, for the generalized levees for the dam failure, because it's a bureau facility in Clean Water Services Hazard Mitigation Plan, we deal with Clean Water Services. Yep. But it should be in the county plan to deal with the widespread issues.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that's how they would interact between the two plants.
Okey dokey. Thank you.
Okay, so that is where we are at with our hazard mitigation plan. To to close things out here, I wanted to, I can put our board preparedness action plan up on the screen here and give you the where are we now? In terms of the general preparedness activities, again, I'll continue to work with Aaron and Kevin and other other staff in order to look at supplies, contacts, resources. We've done this work session today. Thank you for listening. I I know it's a lot of information to to throw at you here, but we wanted to start this discussion again, with a little level setting and and answer the basic orientation to how our program works and how the emergency management system all fits together. The next item to look forward to will be a work session on board emergency operations. Again, reviewing the emergency operator, the elected officials, emergency operations guide, looking at emergency declarations and and other important tasks that that we want to make sure that the board is refreshed and updated on.
May, so spring is April, May, June.
Yeah.
And May is going to be wicked intense for us with the two agency budgets.
Yes.
And so what I'm trying to do is see what the rolling agenda foretells. It doesn't yet foretell for June. Oh, boy.
Yeah, and we'll be mindful of May especially. And it, you know, it may be scrunched a little between that spring, summer and the two, the next two work sessions.
Yeah.
Will work.
Yeah.
We'll work on that. The main thing, you know, we wanted to learn today was does the content of these work sessions look like good pacing for the board? And you've said that. So we'll work on making sure the timeline fits.
Two quick comments. One, one is regarding the reports that you put out. I find that you're more accurate than the TV folks on weather. So I appreciate that.
Good, good to hear.
I I suspect there's parameters on what you get involved with and how big and how small. You didn't have on your hazard nuclear wars. You didn't have plagues and all that kind of stuff. So I mean, there's got to be parameters. But E M T to me is probably one of the more serious issues. It doesn't take much of a rocket to sit there and have a E M T hit an area and and wipe out.
Please.
I mean electromagnetic pulse.
Got it. Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that to me probably and biohazard, it wouldn't take much of a small rocket and then he junior high school could send one up and 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 infect. So you you might think about that.
Yeah.
More importantly to me is that you you mentioned resources several times. I understand that, you know, earthquakes, I was in San Francisco and the big one hit down there and it looked good on TV, but it, you know, there was whole sections that weren't touched and others that weren't. It may be not within your parameters of how you fund, but it seems that there ought to be some coordination between insurance and and how we look at that in terms of funding our own operations. Because if if your centers are knocked out, but everybody else is fine, how are you going to get them up? And if you're looking for federal money and it's coming six months from now, I'm going to help. So I bet you just I I just was wondering what your funding policy, you don't need to solve that today because we've been through a lot here in the last hour.
Yeah. And you mean dislike disaster assistance funding or?
Some of it's that. I I know that a lot of people actually lay in some kind of Lloyd's London or some insurance, some self insure just to have it available for facilities that you're responsible for. I mean, Clean Water Services on their side does that. I know the county does not. And so, yeah, I'm just curious how you intend to fund these things that crumble and fall apart if your population is still going like normal, but we're down on our facilities. How you plan to do that? So that's that's my comment. Yeah, I don't expect an answer right now.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot to that and multiple funding streams that can support that.
We can all talk about that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that, and again, so there there's our schedule. We'll get the we'll we'll get the orientation to board emergency operations on the on the rolling agenda here pretty soon. And but with that, just to review our purpose again, wanted to follow up on the round table, present the the board action, preparedness action plan, give you a broad orientation and then give you that brief orientation of the hazard mitigation plan. Are there?
No more than I did before, and I have a much broader and deeper appreciation for the work that all of you emergency subject matter experts and all of the others who are involved. Do. So thank you.
Great, thank you. You're welcome. And we will follow up on these things and we'll be in touch.
It's a lot faster if Aaron didn't talk so much.
I was pretty chatty.
No parents were working on it.
Yeah.
You know, that nano that we talked about. Okay. Well, that's bringing us to the close of the work session. However, we do have an executive session that we need to have before we adjourn. So just to double check, was there anything else that may have come up while we've been in work session? Nope. All righty. So do we have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six zero sub two sub E for the purposes of discussing property negotiation? So moved. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero.
I move for a bio break.
Oh, of course. Can we just ten minutes?
Oh, five, five itself. Okay, five minutes.